So the owners just wanted to get it all, it's a consolidation plan. They just wanted to put these three parcels together into one survey and one legal description. I, of course, asked Steve to show me. And as you can see, in my center was in color. But, you know, there were parcels, then this was an out conveyance, this was an out conveyance. So what we're really dealing with is just the remainder of three parcels, less their exceptions. It's a pretty, it's a nice cleanup of what was kind of a mess.
Right.
Can't really obtain a motion one way or the other.
Does it, does it, does this lot line though go through this whatever building there is on Next to the garage?
There's a little line on Ader's property, on the garage. Is that what you're talking about right here?
Yeah.
I think this is their garage.
It is. And I think the property line's like a foot or so off of that garage. It's pretty close.
Okay. And so this little line that you've drawn on there doesn't mean it's like a step or it's...
Yeah, it's probably just a little concrete pad or something next to it, some little steps.
So Jan, you don't have any problems with that, huh? Well, I'll move that the consolidation plan for Andrea and Braden Keber be approved as submitted.
Second.
Will it be secondly approved, all in favor?
Aye.
Well, it's interesting how something like that happens. Well, you know, that was that old Tolliver property, you know, that was Mount Pleasant Gardens years ago, and they kept cutting it up and...
Jerry said he's five minutes away, just let him know. So give him another couple minutes.
Yeah, I mean, really, I think...
Well, maybe Hans did think it was seven o'clock instead of the 6:30 or something.
Well, then, there's the here, the here minutes.
Can we do the minutes?
I can move for approval of the minutes with a couple of corrections that Jan had mentioned on there.
For both months.
Yes.
I forgot, I didn't do that September or the November. I mean, it's time to come.
If we're gonna start on time, you probably need to... If we're gonna start on time, absolutely. But do we, like you said, it, I mean, if we start doing this like around the end of the world, do we want to give...
Five more minutes.
Here at seven and start, you know, a little after.
Do we have a home number for Tom's?
We tried calling, texting.
Is there a second on the minutes?
Yeah, I'll second.
Give us it all.
That's both months, right?
Can we do something?
Yeah. Sorry. It's really all we have from the business meeting unless...
Move to adjourn. See, Dan, is this the, I saw the name on the side of it, is that actually what?
Much better pattern with the... I haven't heard anything, no. We have a few folks that are...
If we get 7:05, we'll call the public hearing for the text amendment into existence. Have our proof of closing feature person, I guess Julie can read that.
I, Dave Wormall, Secretary for the Fort Thomas Planning Commission hereby certify that the attached is a true copy of the notice of public hearing being held on Wednesday, December 11, 2019, at 7:00 PM and 7:15 PM in the council chambers of the city of, of the city building, 130 North Fort Thomas Avenue, Fort Thomas, Kentucky, to consider a stage one development plan for 14 North Grand Avenue, Fort Thomas, Kentucky, and a zoning map amendment for 14 North Grand Avenue, Fort Thomas, Kentucky, from professional office to general commercial. The notice was post, properly posted as required by KRS 100.212 at 14 North Grand Avenue. Perf publication. That's it.
Thank you.
Okay. Before you go on further too, I'd like to accuse myself of an eventual stakeholder in this project, if it's all approved, and so I'd like my vote to be counted as absent.
Excuse me, you were the candidate, recused.
Recused, I'm sorry. That's right. I'm not going to say accused.
Okay, we ask our developer to come forward and identify themselves and tell us why we need a text amendment to this project.
My name's Hunter Thomas, and this is Pete Subak. And I will be developing the, the site into a restaurant, and Pete's company, Gray Bach, is partnering with me, and we'll be doing the build-out. So the, as far as the project goes, the, what we're asking is for the text amendment for outdoor seating, and the ability to have a residence above the, the property as well. And to switch to general commercial. Yes, from office to general commercial.
It's your responsibility to convince us why we need to have a text amendment.
Oh, I see, we're convincing.
This first, this first section is just on the text amendment. It's not a zone change, it's not a document plan.
Okay.
It's just a procedural.
Okay.
So I think the restaurant in this area would be beneficial.
It's a great location, there's a lot of traffic moving through there, it's on the edge of Fort Thomas, and I think a business of this nature would draw a lot of people in, people in the community seem really excited about it, and tend to get behind newer developments like this, as far as restaurants go, so...
Tell me about the budding properties, what they're doing, and why this fits in.
So the Urpenbeck property on the corner is...
General commercial.
It's general commercial. And then 20 Grand on the other side is...
Office.
Is the office.
Yeah, so the line between office and general commercial is basically on the right-hand side of the property.
It'd be moving the line from Urpenbeck's over.
One more lot.
That's true.
Right.
BP on the corner is general commercial as well. So essentially across the street's general commercial as well. So you're just rezoning it from office. I believe the text amendment had to do with allowing outdoor dining in general commercial. So I think that the, I don't think general commercial says you're, you're not allowed to have outdoor dining, but as a function of it being in, what is the other zoning code? As a function of it being in a different zoning jurisdiction, it being listed there, because it's not listed in general commercial, it's kind of addition by subtraction. So it doesn't specifically currently say that you can't have outdoor dining, it just doesn't say that you can't.
You can.
Right. So I guess the pitch there was that, as it relates to, to this property seems to make, seems to make sense to us, or not, not to be hitherto, I'm not privy enough to know about other general commercial properties and why outdoor dining wouldn't make sense for those, or why, why that could be, why it would be detrimental elsewhere.
I asked Kevin the question, we had outdoor dining at the public house, and right now they have it at the Midway, and the Fort Thomas Pizza, and the pub, but those are all in public right-of-way. Do any of those not allow or allow outdoor dining, or is it just something that zoning ordinance has to deal with?
So the reason that the language needed to be done here is because in the current zoning for, those are all CBDs, and the CBD, it specifically states outdoor dining. As far as the, the portion of the, the, the restaurant use. So since it wasn't included in the general commercial language, that's why we need to add it. It's, it's kind of an implication that because we had the language in the one, it's not listed in general commercial, it's not permitted, in my opinion, as a zoning district. So that's why we need to change the language to add that.
And likewise, we have residential properties over top of commercial properties, like in the CBD here, but, and in fact, I think the pub, I don't know if it's being used that way now, but it used to have apartments up above it, but those were both, those were both allowable uses in the CBD.
Correct. So this, yes, CBD and professional office allow those as permitted uses. Currently in the general commercial zone, that's, it's not a permitted use, and that's why, so a restaurant is not a permitted use in a professional office zone, so that's why we had to go to general commercial as the proposal. So in doing so, we didn't have residential uses in the general commercial zone. So in the general commercial zone, the other zones that we have, we have Inverness and the area immediately adjacent to this, do have essentially non-conforming residential in those zones. Over the hair salon, just, just in from the pocket park at Highland and Grand, on Highland, they have residential above, that's a general commercial zone. Inverness, there's residential above, looms across the river. So those are grandfathered in essentially. We don't have any residential currently. The other two commercial, general commercial zones are there by Jeff Wyler, the Plaza, and Kailin, are the other two general commercial zones.
Those are grandfathered in, but if you're gonna do a new building with commercial on one property, on one floor, and residential on the other, there are a number of building code issues that come into play about separation and all that. I guess that's separate from planning and zoning, but that's something that the developer will have to deal with, is, and I guess that's not really something we discuss when planning and zoning.
Not particularly.
And I apply for a building permit, that's where that'll come in.
Precisely.
Maybe a one-hour fire separation between the two.
The, in addition, the, the language that was proposed is similar to what is in the other zones. So they're proposing language, including outdoor seating, is the same that's in the central business district zone, commercial zone, and the rationale between the two different aspects, it says residential uses as regulated herein, and then also noting under other development controls. Those words were essentially taken verbatim from the central business district zone, just once again to, to create uniformity in our, in, in the proposal, and with our other zones.
I guess we really shouldn't talk about the specific proposal, but I am interested if, if the garage is gonna remain a garage, or if that's gonna be a dining area or something.
No, it'd be the kitchen area.
Okay. So we don't have a third use that we'd have to discuss.
That's all you got, Ken?
For that portion of it, I've got a, obviously I like the...
Yeah.
Rick Ward, but as far as the text amendment language, going a little bit further, I might, I didn't separate it out in that fashion, so let me scan through a little bit. The, the, most specifically, the comprehensive plan does discuss this particular site. I have noted on this, I didn't have the pages numbered, so I apologize, but the second to last page at the top, there's several maps, and I have the comprehensive plan with me, if you'd like to see them, that, that kind of show and designate in the land use map that this is, area is conducive to office slash neighborhood commercial. The current map obviously shows this as a professional office, but the, the comprehensive plan would seem to support the idea of this type of use in this area, based on the maps that are associated with it. In addition, there is some discussion in the comprehensive plan about redevelopment and the idea of restaurants, more restaurants, family sit-down type restaurants in the city that we're kind of lacking. So those two, in those two particular areas, that it kind of supports the, the idea of a restaurant in the city, and also in that area.
Is the language about the, the ratio of residential to office space, is that something we typically have in other codes, or is that...
That's the same, that, the rationale was, it, it kind of a discussion we had with the applicant was consistency with our other zones, and that's, that's why it's, it's written The, I, not knowing other cities, you know, it's, it's kind of difficult to, to know whether or not, you know, restaurants in a general commercial, I'm sorry, residential in a general commercial zone is, is a good or a bad thing. Like I said, we have it in a couple of our zones currently, in a couple of the general commercial areas. My inclination would be that this is probably the most interesting aspect of this project, and like I said, not knowing the intricacies of other cities, and really knowing why residences are possibly in or not in very specific general commercial zones throughout other cities in certain areas, it's hard to determine whether or not this is, you know, good or bad for the city.
So if I can add the, I have two other restaurants in Milford, Ohio, which are a bit, a little bit different area, right there along 50, and both restaurants have residents, two residents and then a business also, so they kind of co-mingle those. So they, they both have residents and businesses above them, and it hasn't been a problem for us. We're not allowed up late type of bar, so, you know, so there's no, no noise, the smell really isn't an issue. Traffic, you know, hasn't been that an issue for any of them, so...
The text amendments make sense to me. I don't know if we're ready for a motion, or if you guys have a portion.
We are ready. If you're ready to...
I would make a motion to, now, do we approve text amendments, or we recommend approval to the council?
We recommend.
You recommend.
Yeah. Well, I would make a motion to recommend the approval of these three text amendments to city council.
Second that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
That is a word. That being said, after 7:15, we can do the public hearing relative to the development plan for this particular project. Tell us in detail what it's gonna look like, smell like, taste like, I guess in this case.
Right. So, I mean, the exterior of the business, it would be an Italian pizzeria, serving mainly thin crust pizzas, and we'll have lasagnas and homemade pastas and things of that nature. The interior is what's going to go over, go over the most change, and that's what we have Pete here for. So it's gonna be modernized and kind of cleaned up, cleared out, and the lower portion was to be used for storage, and then we are putting the parking lot in the back, so we'll have our own sort of parking area. Currently, it's a flat sort of yard that I guess that they use for, for different things. But we're really excited, should be able to seat about 70, 60, 70 inside, and in the summer, with, it used to be outdoor dining, just shy of 100.
Are these drawings included in the application? Or does everyone look at those?
Zero.
Yeah, the exterior remains largely unchanged. I think the biggest change is probably just these three windows here. As you come up Grand, and that's just to let a little bit more light into the dining room currently, that's just a solid brick wall. And then the other kind of main change would be to take the garage door off and put some, kind of a storefront system to allow some visibility to the food preparation, similar to what you might see at Dewey's, where you see people making pizza, kind of keep it lit, and just kind of make it an interesting thing to look at. The interior just largely gets gutted, to your point with that fire separation between the first and second floor for the residents and the restaurant, probably will include a sound ceiling. I don't, the hours, Hunter, maybe you can speak more to the, the kind of expected hours of this, I could be an open late sort of...
No, nothing good happens after midnight, so we, we'd like to be, we'll close at 10 generally, and during the week, yeah, that can vary, but even on a Saturday night, we're out of there by 11 o'clock, cleaned up and done. Things would, we'd open around 11, little bit prep work would be done in the morning, but there wouldn't be too much going on before, you know, 10 o'clock.
So we still lunch, lunch, dinner?
Lunch dinner, yeah.
Okay. Parking is on site?
Yeah, so we'll, so we'll have the parking in the back, and then...
So this, this plan here sort of demonstrates where the, where the parking comes from. There's six spaces in front that are current parking spaces. There's nine spaces in the back in the new lot. Five of these spaces will be shared with 20 Grand, and then two spaces that are currently shared at Urpenbeck. He's got two here.
Two, okay.
Two are currently shared, the, the attorneys that occupy the building currently share two spaces at Urpenbeck. So in, in all, I believe that it, that accounts for...
Twenty-one.
Twenty, there's 21 parking spaces required based on square footage, and we've gotten 23 in our proposed plan.
So we'll be parking along Grand Avenue?
In the front there, yeah.
In the front, there'll be currently, that'll be a handicap spot. It'll, it'll kind of look like it does now, you can pull up and park there, or you can come around into the 20 Grand lot and into the new lot in the back, or these spaces here in front, this existing lot for 20 Grand.
The front ones, you basically have to pull in, get back, back in, and bring it in.
Yeah, correct, yeah. Yeah, you're coming down here. Initially, when we kind of thought about this project, we thought about putting a drive in here that would get you into the parking lot right next to the building. However, the property lines didn't set up well for that, and then we didn't want to make a curb cut different than what it had, so that we didn't get into KDOT, or any, changing anything at Grand Avenue.
There's some water, sewer there, they were gonna have a little trouble with this.
Do you enter the building from the existing front door on Grand Avenue?
Correct.
You enter from the back also?
No.
There will be...
If you park in the back, you gotta walk around.
The walk-in side, yeah. There will be an egress, you know, for the patio, be able to go in and out.
Is there no way to enter the building from the backside? I'm just saying, if I drove down, I think I'd be going to try to go to the back and park only because I didn't want the back on the Grand Avenue?
Right.
So there'll be a new sidewalk.
So I'd want to walk in that side.
Yeah, yeah, you'll have to come up the side and to the front.
So no way to put a door or whatever.
There is, so the, it, when you would pull in, you'd be in the basement area. So going forward, that might be something we could look at, what, how to make that look more appealing.
You'd walk up to the deck, is there a deck?
It shows steps, you walk up. Yeah, steps up to the deck.
That would be that as well.
It's gonna sound like you're a driver, your partners are gonna be behind.
They will, yeah, they will.
Grand Avenue is a state route, isn't it? And these, I mean, the last thing in the world they would let you do would be park and have to back out on the Grand Avenue.
Right.
But I guess since these are existing, the highway department has nothing to say about that.
Right, since they, they decided initially, like they said, they wanted to consider a different encroachment point, and, you know, there was concerns with getting that in, partially in relation to its proximity to Highland Avenue. When you're on that type of a route, there is distances, and that would have been, I think, a larger concern of mine as a zoning administrator. I may, may have even considered at that point, asking for a traffic study or something of that nature, but since they're using an existing location of 20 Grand, and they are proposing an access easement for that portion of it to get to the site, that there really wasn't any involvement in, in KDOT at that point.
Obviously, the handicap spot needs to be on that level of, if that's a certain restaurant, but, you know, I, I, the previous use probably didn't get a lot of in-and-out traffic with the restaurant, they probably have a lot more traffic there, and it's just really a bad situation from a design standpoint to have to back out on the 30 Grand Avenue or 400 street.
I wonder if you can, how do you drive across the front of the building, let somebody off, and then go to the back of the park? Can you do that?
I think that's one of those things you just kind of...
I'd almost rather give up the parking backing in the Grand Avenue in favor of the lane down the side of the building, it gets me to 20 Grand. Because I could make that, in circulation, I could make that in-only, and make the out on the other farther down Grand Avenue on 20 Grand, coming out. So that'd be the, basically the same traffic getting out of 20 Grand as it is right now, but I'd allow them to go in next to the building and maybe drop off all people to the front door.
I'm not sure the elevation changed there, but, you know, elevations, you know, from the left side of the building, adjacent to the parking lot, 20 Grand, up, up that way, I don't know what the elevation changes there for accessibility.
Were you talking steps or something?
I don't know. Well, that's just it, if it's, if it's about the accessibility, you know, handicap accessibility, what is that elevation change in?
A ramp. You'd ideally want a ramp on a step.
Right, if people are gonna drive through there.
Lighting is pretty much non-existent in the front, but it's gonna bother anybody.
Yeah, no, there won't be anything that is offensive to the front.
I think the only exterior lighting you might see is on, maybe on this, this, the elevation as you're coming up Grand, there's a sign there, so maybe some building lights that illuminate that sign. Otherwise, the front lighting will remain largely unchanged, we'll probably put a single pole light in the back to light the new parking lot, just for safety reasons. And also to illuminate that new sidewalk that'll come up the side, providing access from the rear parking lot to the front entrance. But...
This is a state half-by-living, so I can't really tell how big the deck is. Can you kind of, but you could just kind of show me where the deck is, like, does it cover up them?
Well, I can see, that's about, it's that shot.
Can you see it on the lower board?
How big is that deck?
Yeah, this is kind of the edge of the proposed deck here.
Oh, so it really, okay, if that's anything...
That does a little, can only...
Yeah, just...
And then there's, there's access, it'll also be, this is the new walk, this side.
So it's not a huge amount of outdoor area you have, it's just enough to get to...
I think 36 is what it'd be at.
Yeah, 34.
Okay.
Did anyone else want to see a larger, larger? You can pull on the back door.
No, I just, I think, I think I can read the rest of it.
Okay.
Do you have any kind of an agreement with Urpenbeck as far as those two spaces?
I do, I went and spoke with him, and he weren't happy to extend the, the same terms to us.
Kevin, we're looking at this, this arm, or whatever, that surrounds us, that's attached, I guess what you had shown to the property over on, on Highland, I guess. What's the zoning of that? That we were talking about, this is adjacent to a, a general commercial, but is it really, or is, is that, that pan handle that sticks out there, is that, is that professional office, or...
So the pan handle that's there, that, this, that's all part of the professional office zone, so there would be a slight separation... So there would be a slight separation from the general commercial zone. I wouldn't classify that personally as spot zoning per se, you know, when it's not contiguous with it, just because that whole area is general commercial. But that is all where the apartments are, technically that's professional office, as is, you know, the property of Twenty North Grand. Obviously, the apartments were in there before that designation, and they're a non-conforming use in that particular zone. But that is professional office there, and there would be a slight, it wouldn't be necessarily moving that general commercial line. It would be designating this lot as general commercial. Once again, I personally wouldn't construe that as spot zoning, since it's technically not connected, it's close enough, and I think the same intent is there for...
Do we have anything that, I don't wanna say restricts us, but recommends against that based on our comprehensive plan or anything else?
Not that I'm aware of. I think that, you know, based on the lot sizing and everything, that certainly meets the regulation of the proposal, so there's nothing that's really specific to that particular issue of a small strip of land, you know.
Between, maybe between.
The gas station is general commercial across the street?
Yes.
And how about the bank that's next to that, is that professional office or is that? I'm just trying to get an idea if there is a cluster.
The full scope, actually, I do have a map in the other room, let me grab it and get the full scope of that. So the full scope of the... It appears that the bank is professional office. The general commercial is in the red, and essentially is the BP, Erpenbeck's, a small strip leading up to the area where Cowlstone is. So that's the red, the green is professional office.
But that whole neighborhood is kind of a mix of PO and GC, and they don't really have clear defined boundaries. It's a little bit of this and a little bit of that.
Correct, there's a lot of non-conformity in there.
Yeah.
Jan, if we change the zoning to the general commercial on that parcel, can we put any, any restriction that it be limited to restaurant use? Or since we put that in there, any general commercial use could then go in?
Once you've zoned it as a general commercial, you pretty much open it up.
We can't limit it to this development plan or anything, though.
Of course, if they change, if this restaurant changed in the future, they would have to come in with another plan. They'd have to satisfy all requirements of general commercial.
But we've got a whole longer list of things that could be in the general commercial or retail. Is there any way, any other way to put a restaurant in here without changing that zoning?
I mean, you could potentially add that to the professional office zone and a restaurant. I actually kind of actually in discussions kind of steered the applicant away from that from the perspective that I don't think that's the idea or intent of a professional office zone. Generally, a professional office zone is a transition zone between residential and commercial. And when you add a restaurant to that zone, I think that would not be conducive to the idea of a professional office zone. So I personally steered the applicant toward general commercial, since, you know, the use for this was gonna be restaurant.
I know we ask this every time a general commercial issue comes up, but I'm just thinking about the residential. Almost every other general commercial area we have is not something you'd be putting residential in, isn't it? We got the whole D'Arum Porium Center, which is all one story. We've got one of the other general commercial areas we have.
So the four areas are Inverness, the Inverness area?
And that already has a lot of residential over commercial.
Obviously, this area, you have the Plaza and you have KLH in the south end. You know, once again, the language talks about the second story, so, you know, conceivably, if they wanted to add a story above, you know, the Plaza Retail, that would be...
Conceivably, but who would want to do that? That's, I'm just trying to think of the worst case scenario where someone would put...
That might be it.
But you're essentially in upper top of that. I mean, that's the way most of, most of downtowns were, you know, a hundred years ago. People lived out of business and they lived upstairs, you know. People in the building inspector in Covington, they'll deal with that all the time.
We do a lot of construction downtown Cincinnati, that's sort of every application is a retail or restaurant with living above. Totally different situation, but that makes a lot.
The only thing that bothers me is the parking pulling right on Grand Avenue. I don't think we have any control over that, really. It's an existing condition and they're grandfathering it.
So how hard is it to get, on the bigger ones, they propose shared parking agreements spaces that are over Twenty Grand? How hard is it to get from there to the front door?
Oh, there isn't much of a, maybe a one-step great difference once you're, once you're right there.
See, if that's not too hard to transition there, then I would think people will probably not park in Grand because they're gonna here for the life of backing home in Grand Avenue just to paint it. And they would just park there and walk up. Or, like I say, the back way, you can make it pretty easy to do.
If I may, as far as the shared parking is concerned, there is more than ample parking based on calculations of square footage and what I had to do in depth as far as the parking is concerned. There was ample parking at the Twenty Grand site to accommodate not only the Twenty Grand, but the calculations that have to be done for shared parking. So, you know, if there was, you know, additional beyond the requirement, obviously, that's what we're intending to meet and what they are required to meet, but there's ample parking there to accommodate both uses. The most highly, I guess, restrictive timeframe would be for the lunch hour because those are, the professional offices is when they're occupied. Toward evening, there's ample parking. So by the calculation, the most restrictive was during the day, six to six, six AM to six PM. And there was, if I'm not mistaken, I didn't do the precise square footage of the buildings because there was like twenty extra parking spaces that was there.
When I drive by, I don't see a whole lot of people in Twenty Grand parking. People come for lunch are gonna park outside of these proposed shared spots. They're gonna park anywhere they see them, please. And if nobody upset about it, these will probably be marked, right? It's be, it's be as part of your establishment, but they may be anywhere. They don't pay attention to that. I guess that's not gonna bother anybody, really. There isn't many people in there.
You know, I think it would obviously be, you know, on the flip side, I think that they would want to... Part of my considerations, and if you'll notice on the second to last page, I have a significant number of considerations whenever you do, if you choose to make a motion in favor. This is an extensive list of considerations that I think you should take into account and make part of the motion. And, you know, one of those does state that the, any agreement be in place before, you know, before any permits are issued or anything of that nature moving forward. The, in which I don't envision being a problem, but I think it's definitely a necessity that needs to be kind of a T crossed and I dotted type of thing.
Well, actually, our zoning order requires a written agreement as far as shared parking if it's different properties, and they have to record that at the county clerk.
That would be a problem. That wouldn't be a problem, yeah, sure.
I guess the big issue is to have a zone change, it's these two items in the considerations that we have to find that the existing zoning was inappropriate and things have changed in the neighborhood that make this a sensible thing to do. I mean, the PO and GC are not really that far apart that I could say it's inappropriate. We just have someone that wants to put a restaurant in, and that's what we have to do. That's not really the way we're supposed to make zone changes. So that's the only thing hurdle I think we have to jump is figuring out how to work that so that it's, it makes sense. Do you have any suggestions, Jan, on how we would declare this inappropriate?
Well, I think as far as, real quick suggestion would be, the comprehensive plan supports neighborhood commercial. I think that's your biggest ticket right there. The diagrams, maps in the land use plan support office and neighborhood commercial in this area.
You think that's good enough, Jan?
Well, I think you wanted to go with, I think what Kevin's doing is saying on the either or.
Yeah.
He's saying the second option, where you say comprehensive, it's in compliance with the forward-thinking comprehensive plan that we've just adopted, instead of saying it was in error when it was adopted.
Yeah.
Jan, in order to approve the development plan, do we need to make that a requirement and that the shared parking be in place?
Tim, that's noted on, under, on the considerations. Like I said, I strongly feel that all these aspects should be considered as part of any motion is considered. Number three under development plan speaks to that. Should be noted that the access easements be obtained in advance of the, or actually, it's part of the development plan approval.
Is there any more discussion, or are we retaining a very complicated? Yeah, I don't know, this is a complicated motion to make. I would like to make the motion that we recommend to the...
We're approving, isn't it?
We are approving?
Yeah, we can approve development plan.
Oh, is it the, I thought it was a zone change?
You're doing a zone change and you're doing a development plan.
Couldn't we do the zone change first?
You did the text amendments.
Oh, oh, okay, so we've got two...
It's on first, no, it's...
Yeah, you got it. All right, so we've got two fold on this, the development plan and the zone change, okay.
But you have to do the zone change in order to approve the development.
Yeah, that's what I was, that's what I was, yeah.
I mean, they're kind of in tandem, but you...
Yeah, but we do them all at the time, okay. I would make the motion to recommend to city council the change in zone from PO to GC for the property at fourteen North Grand Avenue on the basis that it's in compliance or it, compliance is, sorry, or it's supported by the comprehensive plan of the city of Fort Thomas for it to be a neighborhood commercial restaurant kind of use. So I need more from that for just a zone change?
We need to second.
I'll second it.
You all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Vote, so we're... Step one.
Anyone else want to try the motion on the development plan? Because that's a complicated one.
So, well, I'm happy to try to make the motion, but that has, the approval is contingent upon council approving the change of the zone.
So that would...
The text amendment doesn't, doesn't impact, well, I guess it does, or it doesn't.
They're, they're, they're separate but entangled.
Well, the text amendment is gonna go through, I mean, I shouldn't say that. You're gonna recommend the text amendment, and the text amendment could be accepted by council.
Sure.
Okay, and that's gonna be in place, and they could approve or disapprove the zone change. Okay, so those two aren't necessarily linked, but now when you do your zone change, that's gonna link to your development plan.
Well, the development plan, with the outdoor seating, that what we, in order to approve the development plan as submitted, we, the text amendment has to be approved as well as the zone link.
Correct, correct.
So that would be like a condition, I guess the motion would be that the council approves those text amendments.
All right, and if I, if I may, you know, under, under the considerations on the development plan, we didn't really get extensive into discussion as far as lighting, landscaping, screening and things of that nature. You, I'm sure you obviously read the report and have all those elements, but some of those considerations are things that we should consider as far as part of your motion, under, under considerations of development.
Now, nobody mentioned tree commission. Do we need, do they need to go to tree commission, or is it in here, sorry?
No, we, we still need to do that, we just have...
I believe it's, the tree inventory is noted in number five under development plan.
Okay.
That's, that's part of that recommendation, the tree commission. The applicant didn't get a tree inventory together in ample time. Turns out there are, it's a lot of honeysuckle in the area. There is, I believe, six trees that are applicable that they would regulate, and the applicant would need to submit, under the development plan regulations, something that the tree commission ultimately get approval. And that's, like I said, that's part of number five as far as that recommendation. So absolutely, that's, that needs to be in there.
All right, well, I'm gonna move for the approval of the development plan as submitted, conditioned upon council's approval of a change in the zoning to GC as well as a text amendment to the GC allowing outdoor seating as part of the uses. And that is conditions...
Excuse me, you really wanna do all three text amendments, I think. You wanna do outdoor seating residential and above ground residential. I think you could just say the three text amendments.
The three text amendments be approved by council. And then that the development plan... Needs to be, to have the following, the five or the, not amendment, is it?
Or number two for some reason.
All right, that, that the parking provisions, including the shared agreements for, shared parking agreements, be in place and consistent with the GC. That the access agreements as well be in place and recorded. That the tree, tree inventory in conformance with the tree regulations be submitted and shown in compliance. That lighting and landscaping and screening all be in conformance with the zoning. Waiver of the loading and unloading space. Oh, so that, and that we waive the loading and unzoning provided that the loading and unloading will be done outside of ordinary business hours. Everybody okay with that?
Is there anything on six we need to hit there?
A lot of those things are technically in... A lot of those things are technically in the stage two development plan, however, it's, you know, they are important elements is why I put them in there as far as worth stating.
Should we just say that the stage two, that in follow-up to this, that the stage two development plan will include all the necessary requirements, including water detention, lighting and any other regulations of stage two plan requirements?
And those for this particular site will be reviewed by myself, just a second.
So moved.
Second?
Will you move second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? So ordered.
All right.
All out of the people?
Yes, we're ready for, for less complicated. I'll mix the pieces next time.
Thanks, folks.
Thanks.
So it's basically gonna follow the same type of menu that you got over at the company?
It will, and I can pass those menus out to you right now if you'd like to look. They, we'll follow the same guidelines. The, I currently have another restaurant next door that would be a little more high-end, so we try and keep it as accessible.
It's a meat and rice place?
Yeah, that's right. So, for example, we'll probably add salmon to the menu, something we kept off the menu before. Brussels sprouts are kind of a big thing nowadays, so, Brussels sprouts.
Have you tried some of them?
First thing you do when you come in.
I'll make the motion to close the meeting?
All in favor?
Aye.